All right.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes for a regular meeting on December eleventh.
Motion second and all in favor say aye.
Aye. I'm gonna make the motion to approve the minutes for one and two, non-public. December eleventh, second.
Motion made in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the consent.
Further, Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Beverly, our minute taker, leave this as your last meeting. After ten years, remotely ten years. Wow. Thank you. And public input.
I have nothing. Something I brought, Mike and I talked about earlier in the week. And it has to do with, you know, we're doing so I'm. I'm managing the planning board there and one of the conservation commission bringing one up. And it has to do with the seventy-five foot buffer on the wetlands. And it was talked about on the planning board whether that seventy-five feet could be put into current use. The wetman, wetlands, sorry, the wetlands can be put into current use no matter what size. But dry land is used with like ten acres or something like that, so. Mike and I talked about it and. Uh, he didn't think that it could and I haven't found any evidence that it could. But dry, add dry lines into the wetlands or your current use. So. Any ideas on that? Hasn't come up, I don't imagine it's come up. That was just a question we had, said I researched it before the next planning meeting, which is.
You might be for assessing.
Right, it'd be a tell me there like three hundred and sixty-four wetlands that they've identified and if they all were current use, it probably wouldn't, but that's. Quite a little nightmare there. And it's, it's also, it's around ponds and streams and things to do with that. I don't, I don't think that was, I would never. Never tell, but anyways, it was voted on on the planning board and brought up that and was. Insects and was that it probably could go under current use. Because the idea was that it's seventy-five feet are taken away from somebody's property or actually the wrecking property and it's got to be taxed. So that's why I brought them all in, they put it in current use. That's what I'm saying.
It says the risky take down. Being on short term.
So you're saying that all wetlands are considered current use regardless of size?
No, no, I'm saying that you can put the wetlands into current use. Uh, regardless, it's done that. A dry land usually has ten acres, I think it is anyway, but wetland doesn't have to be, but if you have a buffer around it, that's dry land. And that'd be added into the wetlands, some of the current use. Part of it. This is not right.
The legislative. That buffer is not supposed to be touched either. That's supposed to be.
You, yeah, right, you, you, uh, you can't. Actually do anything, you can't even mow it.
Well, the wetlands is in current. I'm not talking about state-owned. Property or anything like that. It was, somebody has. Say a ten acre lot and they have three acres in the middle that's flat, yeah. You're saying seventy-five feet all the way around that could be added to it, I'm, I'm saying can it be?
Point of order, maybe it's fifty.
Fifty feet.
Fifty feet, they changed it from seventy-five to fifty.
They didn't argue.
But the, the idea is that the, the buffer is there to protect the wetlands, it's, it's part of the. The natural, the, the order is to use the wetlands, the. The erosion that comes from, from the dry land in the wetlands, to attempt to protect them. Um, and. The, the thought, well, Scott's getting to it, it seemed. It seemed overly burdensome to the property owner if they're not able to, if they have to be taxed on land if they need.
But who's making the, is this a warrant article?
Yes.
If you vote on the town.
So, so the town would be saying that nothing can be done within the fifty or seventy-five foot?
If the town votes it in.
Why would we do that?
Well, the tax plan.
Um, it's still on the, you know, we're still on the planning board project there, we haven't had a public hearing on yet. But this is what's proposed, a possible revision, and again, that thing about the charges came up this way, I just brought it up here, just. We're discussing the amendment here, it's made here.
Couldn't have livestock, you couldn't farm it, you couldn't mow it, you couldn't do any, that's being proposed by, being discussed by the planning.
We are discussing.
Oh, no. I don't think it's our decision, I, I, it would seem to me that taxation is basically set by the state in terms of current use.
Save that for the public hearing, do you want some public hearing?
No, you brought it up.
I brought it up, yeah, we guess we wanted to say that your meetings, I'm just saying that. We'll be having a public hearing on, on the ninth of January, as to what actually goes in under the warrant there, but I just wanted to know. Your opinion on this first before we have that public hearing, so I can bring that up and say. It probably can or probably can't be.
Without it was public input, we're not supposed to react, so.
Interesting question. Okay, thank you, I'll leave it at that. Anything else?
Seeing none. County Cheshire Administrator Chris Coates. And friends.
And friends, and friends, and friends. You need to press continue if you want, that's my name. I know we're here to talk about EMS, but I, I wanted to share with you a document that you've seen as well, I'll share it with you again. And I dragged along this house, I only have freedom, so you guys get it. Um, you have the clips, not that many. We can share, what it shows you. Is that since, um, twenty nineteen, last six years. We compared all other counties. With where we've, uh, taxes to be raised and where we, we've been in to that. And over that period of time. Uh, we've raised taxes, uh, taxes, we raised, increased by zero point five percent for polar, uh, just over a dollar, seven hundred thousand dollars. And, um, and we find that we're the lowest actually. County, at the same time, we continue to grow. And continue to arm raise to do projects. So I just thought I would share that because we're, we're proud of the fact that we're able to balance it, not every year, and I've said that for years. Uh, to anybody that ever listened, that every year it's a, a new challenge. And this year is, is probably one of the biggest challenges we've ever come across, but. The last six years, we've taken great pride in trying to come up with a budget that works. And continues to do whatever we, we need to do to serve the community, so I just wanted to share that.
Good job.
Yeah, I think so. So, the. I'm gonna start off and then I'll hand it over to the chief. Um, but it's about Cheshire EMS, we want to thank you for the opportunity to come here, really talk about where we are and how we're moving forward. We're proud of the fact, you're gonna hear words like continuing to care. That we've been able to put together three phases to ensure that our, the communities that we respond to, so wanting to be one of them is cared for. Whether it's. You know, you know, SmartWise and the, um, wheelchair service that they provide that we support. Whether it's interfacility transfers or nine-one-one contracts or backup contracts, we're proud of the fact that, um, within a year's time. We've been able to put a product on there that we stand by, we're proud of, we think it's a quality service and it meets the needs of our, our community at the highest level. Um, as you know. And I look at Jack when I say this, we, we didn't ever think we were going to be in this position. Well, we found ourselves in that position. And, uh, then we actually continued to move forward to see what that meant. You know the history, because I told you it multiple times. But the bottom line is, we're, we, we, we decided to move forward. We worked through that first year, we were actually in our second year, but this is the first full year of service. And, uh, the number we're reflecting of the need and service in the community, and I will tell you. That as we move forward. It continues to be there in communities that maybe we're backed up to, that, that are struggling to find a second. And so at some point, those are going to be issues that we're going to look at, we are looking, we're prepared to step into those situations. Uh, I was telling the chief, uh, just a moment ago. Your chief, um, that I received a document this week about, about Peter Ross and the issues that, you know, some about, uh, the. Flood board and, and some decision they're making over there around annual service and it's works. And what, you don't know what it means, it could be not getting, it could mean something about the zero, but, but the budget line for EMS. Is, is a concern, and so. Those are things that we're always looking at, but in each community, there's some different issues that we're struggling with, I will tell you also. That we're going to talk numbers tonight. And we're gonna give you a range, we're not gonna give you a number, it's twenty, it's twenty-two-six, we'll give you a range where we think it's gonna, where we believe it's gonna land. But it's twenty-two-six we're talking about, for us to hit you with a number, which is not realistic. We, we took months upon months to really try to find out where, where they go on that. With that being said, there's some things that could alter that on multiple levels. We could have, it's, um, some level of inflation during that period of time, we don't know, we've got costs that go up. On the flip side of it, we're working on a state level to increase. Um, uh, working with, uh, Representative Hunt and others to increase the prices to pay more. We have a bill that was presented last year, they, they're in study right now. But we, we understand that it's gonna come out of study and that there's going to be a, um, a bill moving forward that's going to say. This, you need to increase by this percentage, last year was a three hundred and fifty percent increase that was presented, they said, slow down for a second with the prices. But that's only a small part of the budget, the other part of the budget is Medicare, Medicaid. And we're working. On a national level, with our national organization, we're putting three motions forward on, on our national association of counties. To help them, and both, because their base out of DC can work with people like Senator Jean and across on both sides of the envelope. To, to help us fund certain things, look at Medicare, Medicare, if we can get Medicare rates pumped up, we can argue with the state to get Medicaid rates pumped up. And that's gonna help everybody, not just Cheshire EMS, but everybody, so those are a lot of unknowns that are out there, and we are constantly looking at ways. To how we, how we can continue to, you know, generate more money, and what we're telling everybody, everybody's paying. Everybody has to pay for the service, that's just the reality of the place, and. Um, our numbers, I'm proud of the fact that when we started to where we are today. Our numbers, and I can talk about that down the road, have increased and we're, we're billing at a certain level and our receipts were down here. And now we've inched up, um, I think where we started, where we are, a good amount, and I. Just see us continuing to have that inch up a little bit more, so that could be a factor as we move forward too. There's a lot of unknowns, is what I'm saying, so you're gonna hear a lot of data from us tonight in a short period of time, then we'll talk numbers. And, um, one little thing, I'm gonna hand this out. Uh, to, to conserve paper because, uh, Commissioner Clark is here. Uh, I'm thinking on both sides, so when you open this up, just go like this, and that's the easy way, because I was like, all right, what, are you really, and I said, no, Chris, just go like this. I'm gonna hand it out, I'm gonna turn it over to, um, Chief Carter, and he can introduce everybody. And, and go from there.
Yeah, yeah, I can look for everybody. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much for having me, and allow me to take three times, so we just get these. Um, we can, we can parrot back, Chris touched on, I'll mention that. He asked me to kind of explain some of the stuff that we're taking into service, like through operationally. Tools provide better service. Um, as mentioned, the staffing, um, but within Cheshk County and abroad. Um, I'll say that we're almost connected staff. Right now we're at forty-eight, um, we would, uh, like it adds today, uh, thirteen paramedics full-time. Uh, which is our, 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 our. Um, so right now, we have myself, we have the two double chiefs, uh, Atkins and Daniel Bishop, operations and clinical, and. We have, uh, thirteen community full-time paramedics. It's full-time, we have eighteen ENTs, just now we have two for young individuals. Uh, you have our staff involved there. Um, thankfully, we have our human resources department with Tim May, active in search now, coming back to the area, always looking for additional officers there. And as you know, we provide front end nine-one-one response, medical community, paramedic intercepts, and also non, uh, emergency planning boards. I have numbers in years, um, I talked to Scott this morning. And he's actually up closer to the twelve thousand runs this year for wheelchair and transport. Um, as, you know, the question lifted on fourth quarter was eleven thousand seventy-three months. If we think of what that means, the people are being, some of the weight that takes off of, you know, for non-merited transportation for. Some of the other ambulances and things like that, it's, it's absolutely huge. Our training has gone with some bounds, we utilized a lot of same-store grants. Um, to raise awareness for trainings. Uh, we're holding monthly trainings, we're working towards on shift trains. Uh, we have, uh, multiple members of Swan Fire Department at our training, and we're just continuing to grow that. Um, one of the changes that was recently made was the division of resources with the deputy chiefs. So we added the deputy chief of clinical services and operations, we can try to. Really focus on making sure that we're learning a lot of things, we're everything probably. We've done multiple things within the communities, CPR trainings, um, car safety programs. Uh, how we can treat, uh, clean tanks, we've been working close to attempts, one of the major pushes that we've been making is in. PTSD, um, and prompt responsive trainings. So that we're trying to understand some of the places where people are coming from in your life and what has brought them to. Where they are today and how we can be more. Understanding of those types of reactions that people may or may not have. Uh, which I think is. Incredibly important and something that not a lot of places are focusing on. So, that's enough about us. Um, about three quarters of the way through the packet here, again, to the nuts and bolts of Swan data. Uh, all of this is active, um, I compiled all of this on the thirteenth of December. Uh, so the first chart here you see is your age, gender, and age. Uh, you can see throughout Cheshk County, we did a study with, um. For giving it, we got them came in, but he did a nice presentation, we went over a whole bunch of. Um. Things that we're gonna be facing, it's a lot of the aging population, um. Training in populations in different communities and what that looks like and what impact it's gonna have on our EMS service. You can see our average, you know, our highest number of calls for the population, uh, eighty, eighty-nine years old. It's something to be aware of. Um, the next one I'm very proud of, our full-time on that, uh, path. Um, so. I broke out the number, you can see the chart there, the down below, our average duty time for calls in Swansea is one minute twenty-seven seconds. Basically what that means, when a pager goes off, within one minute and twenty-seven seconds, on average, we have an ambulance leaving our bay. And signing on, responding to that emergency. Um. Our response time in the town of Swansea is seven minutes twenty-four seconds, and transport, uh, thirteen minutes and thirty-five seconds. You can see the, uh, New Hampshire ninety percentile of response times, twelve minutes thirty-six seconds. Take that for what you will, there's a lot of very large, vast rural areas in New Hampshire, but I think it is telling that we're meeting or exceeding the expectation of the state of New Hampshire. Uh, the next chart there, it gives you a breakdown of when we're seeing calls. Uh, one of the things that we're looking at in the very near future is, do we need to put up impact trucks? We're looking at the impact of. You know, interfacility transfers, and what time of day are those occurring? Um. When are the calls occurring in your community, and are we appropriately staffed at all times to meet those demands? And if not, do we need to add additional resources just at specific time? Maybe it is a time, middle of the night, you're not necessarily seeing that many calls, we can move one of those resources to change it to, uh, a certain other part, part of the day. Uh, so the next one is just some of the, the events that have been done in, uh, County Swansea. For the county Tommy's special truck, uh, we've gone forward for the horse trailer. The Swan Home, home base, the misspent, thank you very much for the invite on that, that was great. Uh, Yon Bell, uh, CPR class. Uh, the Devil Valley, all of the half marathons and multiple, uh, high school football games, and then. We're actually doing the. Parking games, um, if this started out, the hook is, hello, he nice, we've done two of those so far with a full model and. We're kind of breaking down a lot of the information that we pulled from, that's a filter that we brought in the new trees and the population. Increased demand by healthcare facilities and dividers, we're working extremely closely with Dr. Spoilsy. Um, man, not, um, health services to see if we can even identify ultimate transport destination, take some of the pressure off of our local emergency departments. Um, whether or not that means. Where, if it's not a, a, an acute emergency, is there, can we call in resources to get that person to a safe place? Um, or to a safe place where they can talk to somebody. Instead of taking up a bed in the emergency department. Um, staffing issues throughout the area. Uh, we're working very closely right now with Winchester ambulance to try to help their chaffing. Um, and, and anybody else who, who has asked for it. Um, in Winchester, we've been. If they only have one member on their ambulance, we'll send one of our providers to. Staff their ambulance so that their ambulance can get out the door and serve the people of their community. Uh, if they don't have anybody on their, their ambulance that day, we're calling in an extra truck and putting up an additional truck in the town of Winchester. And sitting in their town so that their community members can maintain that level of excellence and, and rapid response capability. That's not taking a duty truck, we're putting up an additional truck for that. Um. There, there's a lot of staffing issues in, in the area, especially for ambulance and EMS providers. Um, and then increased call waiting time on gas due to distance travel. Thankfully, we're located near in Swansea, so our, our response times are relatively short. But, you know, we have to look at, we're getting into the winter months, right, where cold and blue season. Um, calls are gonna pop up and they're gonna take a longer time to get there, how do we do that, where do we stay the ambulance system, make sure that they're in. The appropriate place at the appropriate time, and again, that's where it's like that data of. Okay, we're getting a lot of calls in this area at these times of days, what types of additional resources are we getting there as far as, you know, local rescue response? Um, just trying to make sure that we're meeting that need. The billing data collection is something that I'm intimately proud of. Uh, we did transition our billing department, we've implemented at least. Five or six different internal changes to make sure that all that paperwork is done appropriately on time and getting straight up to billing. Uh, which is just hugely important. Um. We did start our strategic planning committee, been very successful, then we'll go off four months and we should have a plan put together, but it's about that long for you to. Uh, staffing, we're, we're doing very well, thankfully, you know, we do have that. Ability to, we have a decent way to pay, good benefits, and it's one of the only actually career EMS departments. Anyway. Um. The expansion, we do obviously, um, most nearly. Any local community, maybe those, we respond to that call, uh, this the other day we responded to a motor vehicle accident, motor vehicle in the town of Dublin. More than happy to help out, and I'm just proud to say that we have the resources to be able to help out our neighbors in that way. Um. At the same time, even when we're having discussions with staffing in Winchester. You know, um. If we're just sending that one provider down or the, the whole truck, we have, that's an additional truck, we can't take away from what we promised to do. We have to add that additional truck to make sure, so it's a careful expansion. Um, and it's just a support. And, uh, if you have any questions about any of that, I'd be more than happy, uh, to answer any of them or anything that I didn't touch on. Please.
Okay, um, I noticed your, um, your time from out, out of your facility to on the road. It's very close to the city of Keene's, which is getting on me. Within seconds, which is good, and. I've heard some good comments on your service, you know, I, I mean, that's, it's really good. Uh, yeah, look, I don't want to know this. Are you, are your vehicles, are they leased or do you buy them outright?
Okay. Okay, apparently we have. All our ambulances are purchased, um, will, are, and as we move forward, due to the fact that we're doing interfacility transfers. And because of the level of miles that we're being asked to go, no longer, they just up to eleven and, and back. It's now. New York, Albany, New York, uh, Boston, Mass, UMass, we were Connecticut, wherever, where, where, wherever there's a bed. That's where we're going. And, um, so that's adding more mileage, so we'll be looking at in the, in the very near future, as we look towards the budget and process moving forward. That we'll, we'll have to be looking at different options, at least in being one of them. Per, per, currently we own the ambulance that we have, we have one more ambulance coming in that we, is paid for, they'll be coming in.
Early June, well, early twenty-fourth of May.
This is two years, two and a half years away or whatever.
The current numbers are.
Exactly, no doubt, but, but we, it's been about two years, we've been waiting for this ambulance, so when it arrives, we'll be happy. So hopefully, it'll be there soon, and it's, and it's a.
A very active unit.
Yeah.
Uh, and I can tell you that part of our strategic plan is coming up with that capital improvement plan, uh, one thing that, uh, specifically Debbie Atkins, uh, we have a committee. On. What are our options, right, what are our purchase prices, what are, um, we mount with new cabin chassis lease options, what are. Um, are there vehicles out there that are turning, go at a reasonable price? Um, and I believe you have five or six different options that we're exploring right now. Because we are aware of the, even the high miles that are on these vehicles. We had a transport just yesterday that went up to the Canadian border in northwestern Vermont. Uh, you know, it's.
Okay, one, one other, this one, like, uh. How many, how many towns are signed on if you folks like town of Swansea is?
What, seven, seven primary towns?
Yeah, several primary towns, which provide ALS intercepts, uh, for. Three additional and then sometimes a fifth or six, depending on if the hospital has theirs up. And, uh, but ultimately, we will respond to every, every single town.
We have, we have, we have a relationship, a principal relationship with nineteen of the twenty-two towns in the city of Keene. So that means backup, meaning, you know, we're, we're going into the city of Keene, we're backing them up, we're backing up the five towns they support. And, uh, then we have our own backup towns like Troy, Fitzwilliam and others.
I was just wondering if we, if there's a chance of getting more of the towns involved like we are here on.
I, I would think that you'll see probably within the next three to six months, maybe even sooner, two other towns coming on as primary.
So that's.
But we can't talk about.
That, that will, the more, what towns that are on, it's, it's, the numbers go.
We'll wait, we'll wait and see, but in reality, it's more, it's a higher level of revenue coming in, yes.
That's it.
Thank you.
The extra vehicles they're talking about, the one in my station in, uh, Winchester or other towns like that, are those vehicles you currently, currently have?
Yes. Yep, so we are, we're, we have a certain number of staff ambulances each day, we try to always have a reserve ambulance. If we were staffing Winchester that day, we would take that reserve ambulance, upstaff it, and then send it to Winchester.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
So currently we have seven ambulances with, uh, paramedic intercept. We're mainly five.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Seven hundred to a million dollars for every ambulance, so.
All right, so that'll come back later.
Uh, so.
Thank you very much, Ray Carter.
Thank you, the quick things just to follow with, uh, the name of the people that gave us the, the oversight of what's coming our way. Uh, that we do from South of Region Plan, Tom Warner. And, um, and the, yeah, you said, so, um. I staffed him, when he talked, pressed on staffing, we've been blessed with the fact that. Um, when we put something out there, we're getting asked. You know, and that's a, that's a good thing, and we're getting quality, uh, so. We're, uh, we'll continue to do that when we, when we have, and we're having. I'm not even saying, our, our hiring, our, we've been very stable at our hiring, I'm not saying anything with that because then I'll text myself. Um, uh, just a little bit on, uh, SmartWise, great partnership. Uh, Scott Simons is, is wonderful to work with, you need to, uh, understand that this was like individual was doing thirty, forty runs a week. He's now doing, working forty, fifty runs a day. And that is helping. Us all, keeping the, and keeping the ambulances on, you know, active so that they can do one-on-ones, so they transfer, that's a blessing. One other thing, Swansea has, you know, in their own backyard, five ambulances. And a paramedic intercept. Not one with, that we've only, no, I don't know where, one, or maybe one time where we had to use. We had multiple calls where we had to get three ambulances in Swansea, but. We had multiple calls where we had to get three ambulances in Swansea, but, you know, I'm just pointing that out. So if you go to the back. Here, I'll walk you through. You remember back when we, when we talked and when uh, when we met upstairs, I believe. Um, some time ago, there was uh. Certain numbers that were going out there and you always knew that that was where it was, and I think somebody on the board, I can't remember who it was, who it was, that, oh, yeah, we used to say. Um, and so I will tell you that it's pretty simple for us, right now. We see a rate of anywhere between forty-three, forty-seven dollars. Uh, per head in in the town, so you just multiply that. And that's, that's what you're, you're beginning for to get the numbers presented for you here. Now, this year, that's, this is for twenty twenty-six. Next year, I think you're at eighty thousand and something like. Um, because of the. Even process that we did. But I wanted to put down below and and show you that. Our billing right now, we're averaging about two hundred and fifty thousand. When we started out, we were doing eighty thousand. Okay, and it's not, it just, it just is, the numbers weren't different. We got more, and we have more calls coming in, um, but we're, we're billing. We're, we're, we're billing a good number. It's thirty-six, it's process what they're willing to pay. So um, we believe that. And last month, we actually hit two hundred and eighty thousand. So we don't have past real yet, but we're gonna watch it and we're gonna see if that number grows and that that number could grow. Over the time, because of the work they're all doing to ensure we get the the information into our billing agency, which is Emax and Peterborough. And they get it out within twenty-four to forty-eight hours and then we turn around and. We we see the revenue. Primary towns, we're looking at primary towns paying uh seven hundred and thirteen thousand and change. Backup towns, you'll have to pay moving forward, um, and that's just under five hundred thousand, four hundred ninety-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. Yeah, ID funds, which you remember into intra. Delivery network, uh, integrated delivery network, um, is a funding mechanism that is focused on. Um, delivering health and care, healthcare. And it's uh, it's monies that we can use that'll offset costs, and we're utilizing that. We u- we utilized it last week, but it's something that comes in. Uh, uh, regular basis, and we feel this is important. It also helps with the cost moving forward. Um, and then Churchill Medical Center. And is going to pay for the ambulances they are, and but everybody across the board. Is going to have to pay for the services. They're gonna have contracts and they're going to. Be, that's how we're gonna be moving forward. So we've given you this document so you can see the different areas of amounts that we could be laying a lot moving forward. So that's where, questions? And it's always a wonder when you come back and if there's other questions that come up.
There's so many primary towns?
Hmm.
How many?
Seven, seven currently, but I believe that um, in the near future, you're gonna have two more.
So if I'm, if I'm looking at this correctly, we're regardless of the. Of the dollar value, the rate, we're just under fifty percent of the of the primary towns. In terms of what our contribution will be.
Yes. Thank you. You're, you're, you're correct, you could base, yeah. Because I'm based on the population and the population relates to your call.
Yeah.
How many called in, in, um?
Just like. Ninety-seven. About fifteen percent of the population is one that gets it.
Yeah.
Uh, fifteen percent. Call and have sense a day for a person.
Yeah, yeah. So that's where we're at, but we wanted to get you back now. So that you have knowledge of where we're going and how you're moving forward. You know, some of the things that we've learned is that. You know, where you, they didn't, the ambulance upgrades that we're gonna have to continually do, really building a plan in place. One to two a year that we're of the mileage at least early on, and we'll see from there what it means, um, because. Uh, and we never, we never. I don't know if it's, I can't, I don't know if it COVID, but we were told that either runs mostly for, and it showed that there's, that it was obviously a lot better. But it never showed that we're gonna be going as far as we're going. And that's just adding miles on, and it's also taking an ambulance off. That, you know, that's, that, that's a day. If you're going down to North Peem, that's an ambulance hospital there. But it is what we need to do to get those, you know, get the the individuals in pieces.
When is the, when is the end life of an ambulance, how many miles is there, a set mileage that ambulance is done? Uh, you know, once it hits some.
I I'm gonna have Ed talk to that, but I will tell you one thing that I've come to know that. There's a, there's an end life for long distance and there's an end life for short distance, right? So you can, you can switch something down, unstop, but Ed, why don't you come over here and just.
It's, it's very simple for us. We're doing about fifty thousand miles a year per vehicle. Um, we've got, our intercepts obviously are, they run local. So mileage is way lower on those. Our plan is to do a three-year rotation on all the vehicles starting this year. We have two coming in. Hopefully, one for sure, two hopefully, and then the intercepts as well down the road. Um, we think a hundred and fifty is a fair number to get rid of these things. Because we'll still get decent trade value on versus something that's two and a quarter and be, uh, New England. Is not good for vehicles, is everybody.
Every three years.
Every three years, that's the plan then.
And we, and we initially had set five. Because we didn't count on what what we're seeing with the interfacility, no one. I've talked to so many different people, everybody's tasting the same situation where the mileage they're putting on, not just in here, but across the state.
They're going to specialized facilities, like we took one to Maine. Uh, just two days ago. You know, we didn't anticipate on going to Maine or Albany, New York, good weather, that's almost an annual turn. So we're racking the miles up.
Your success on staffing, do you feel that? Why do you feel you're so successful on staffing?
I think it's, I I, you guys can jump in too, but I think.
That's it, money?
People, no, I think it's, I think one is. I think some, some people just want to do EMS work. They they don't pay a lot of times, and if you can come in too, if I'm wrong. But a lot of times, you know, you're you fire any EMS, and a lot of people just want to focus on this, and this is giving them a creative focus. On that, I think that you've got something that comes in and all of a sudden, they are, they're, they're getting paid a competitive wage. They're getting retirement. And they're getting good healthcare, and that seems to matter to a lot of people. We're getting a lot of people. Uh, not a lot, but we've got a good amount of people that are coming across rivers and also across lines over in Massachusetts coming in. Because they come on for twenty-four, they go home, they come back down, they work for twenty-four, and they're done for the week. And then there's another shift, and another shift, and another shift, and. And they they like, they like that and um, they know their check's gonna be there. They know the healthcare plan for their children are gonna be there. And uh, so I think we've created a a an opportunity for people to be successful.
So you're fully staffed now?
Almost, we, you know, it. Close, like. One or two people at the most, but I was talking to the, to the HR director today, and she said, yeah, we have people on the pile. That have given us their application. We just didn't have the time to have a decision for it, so we'll look at them, visit them. But, you know, the other thing is that I think it's a, as a, as a county, countywide. We need to come up with a, an answer of all these other problems, these people, local, Dr. Range, right, this line that. Struggle to maintain the staffing and what, you know, is there more? That we can do or not? I don't have the answer to that, but I think that's a discussion at some point down the road, because of the effects as well. When we, we, when we took this on, the message we said is. We want everybody to be healthy because we don't, we don't want to come in and take everything, we just want to support what needs to be supported. And then make sure everybody else is healthy. I'm sorry, I'll, I'll come up here if you don't care.
What is the staffing requirements for the transport that you're talking about, the long distance transfer? Would they have to have this working on those?
So. It depends on the acuity of the patient or uh. Where typically, you have two individuals, whether that be two EMTs. Um, if it requires an advanced EMT, we'll send an advanced EMT if their patient requires a paramedic, we'll send a paramedic. Um, and occasionally, we have extremely sick patients that are on ventilators, multiple infusions, things like that. That patient will have a paramedic as well as an additional provider in the back of the ambulance. Um, and then that would be the reason to kill them. It's a.
Most of the time, it's not a paramedic, it's a, it's an EMT or something?
I think for the interfacility transfer, it's probably about fifty fifty, um, yeah.
The acuity that they're seeing means that there's gonna be more paramedics. Um, you know, it's gonna equal out because it's generally, they're seeing a higher level of. Issues, you know, so that they have to have that level of care on on board is what you were told me in the past.
Yeah, absolutely, and and I live in Westmoreland, so it's not uncommon that if we have to pull one of our paramedics out and we're only down to one paramedic for me to have to come in and cover and. Make sure that we have a high level of.
But to know that you have today, you would start the day with four paramedics on. I mean, I've been told by people that have worked in this line in this area for a long time that um. That they had one paramedic sometimes work in the whole county. Now, I don't, I only know that because of people that have been here doing that and being one of them. And others, well, Mark, you too, it's that, so we're, we're very fortunate. We're staffing at a higher level to ensure that the, that, though, when those people are impressed, we're able to answer that call.
So that influences your staffing and as to how many paramedics you have to. We have, so what these.
We have a certain, we have a certain level that we need. I think currently, we have twelve.
Yep, uh, we have just added the thirteen today, got a clear about absolutely, uh, we have a lot more in orientation.
Uh, with fourteen, I think it's our target.
Fourteen is our target, that allows us uh, minimum of three per ship.
Okay, so you have, yeah, I see, so you have this spare paramedic space to pull off to uh, give your transport, rather than pulling a paramedic off.
You're typically rotate, but yes, yep.
You always have that in any current.
That, that is the goal, is to always have at least one in-house to respond to a call.
Yeah. Yeah, and we have. Our, our leadership level, we have two paramedics and an EMT.
Yep, both myself and Deputy Bishop are also paramedics.
So, so if you have four on or three on, you also have, you know, if, if it's called code.
Zero, zero.
Level paramedic.
We do jump on trucks.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But actually, that night, I'm a truck, not too long ago.
Yeah.
I took that dump and called the Worcester the other day.
Yeah.
Again, you all know what I'm gonna call double.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? And again, we're more than willing to come back at some point when you, after you've exercised this thought about this and.
What's gonna drive the raise?
Where we, where we are, where we have to see.
Cost of expansions?
Advantages, if we have success, it's either type. Pop. And if we're able to bump things up, you know, then that's, that's the biggest issue.
One of the problems you told us about was, like, when you go on a call and a person doesn't want to be transported to you. Basically, you don't get paid for that, is that correct? Yeah, it's, it's like you show up and somebody doesn't.
Yep. So yeah, um, so. And and this is industry standards, any non-transport, so ambulances are basically under department transportation. Right, you can't bill for a non-transport, so we only bill for the call if there's a load of patients smiling and raised. So that's one of the. Um, struggles that we face is how do we recruit that cost? Because it, it does. Costs us money, right, and and to attempt to help or or whatever, but.
But wasn't there a way that you guys are gonna try to work on that and how to recover your costs on that a little bit more?
We are, we are in a, we, we had a few things last year. You know, we were able to, you know, do some things that we, we able to push through some, some, some things uh. Last year, but I will tell you that, and 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 Jack brought it up last week, and it's one of the motions that we're gonna bring down to Washington when we get out of Marla, that. And you want to explain that a little bit about the the language change?
Yeah, basically, the reason why ambulances are under department transportation is literally decades ago. All they did was pick up eyes and drive them. They provided no care.
Right.
Today, any one of these ambulances provides all of the care that you could get in an emergency room. Which is why out of the, you had twenty-one cardiac arrests in town so far, I think, um. They don't have to go to the hospital. They can do everything they need to do at the scene. And so the archaic language in federal regulation that only allows reimbursement when a person is transported, comes back to the days when it was merely. Uh, a taxi driven by undertakers, right? I mean, literally, um, and that history is all over the country. Uh, there are some exceptions for um, uh, uh, intensive level care. When you don't transport a patient, you can't save a life where there's a mechanism to bill, it's, it's somewhat. Um, cumbersome and and um, it doesn't happen a lot because it takes a lot of paperwork. But we're working towards increasing the recognition that you can get the same care in the back of that truck that you get in any emergency room. Um, and um, that's real prehospital care. And um, so Chris and I have spent a lot of time in Washington DC and at the State House. Um, beginning to advocate for that and changing Medicare reimbursement rates, changing Medicaid reimbursement rates. Um, and it's gonna be an ongoing effort, um. Uh, even as, as we go forward, because it's really critical and and and. Mr. Hudwell, you were talking about what's gonna affect the rates, well. You know, you can see from the the budgets, it's basically almost a six million dollar budget. You got five or six ambulances on the road. Uh, if, if uh, if we negotiate a human contract or health benefits, well, that affects a little bit, we kind of project that. If our collection, our revenue from insurances is not what we expect, that affects it. But those are really the two, two things. Uh, we either get more revenue from uh, third party insurers. Or we have to pick it up from the US, the delegation's been pretty clear that. They're not prepared to have this kind of diluted across the entire tax base of the county. Uh, that has to be paid for by the users, and and we started with that and because. It's a big change in 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 the price. Um, but we really don't have no choice. It's, it is what it is at the moment. We're at this evolution where, um, as the first county base in this agency in the Northeast. Um, we're really kind of breaking the ice because. We didn't have any choice. We're facing imminent collapse of EMS services for nineteen towns at one level or another. And uh, obviously, we did what we did. Um. So these prices uh build in a bit for capital replacement of ambulances and uh, and that sort of thing, so. Um, I mean, that, that's our hope. Um.
And. Just on a side note, um, I had the opportunity to 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 meet with Senator Jean a few weeks ago here in Keen. And we talked about two hours, and one of the things she said, she was, you know, if we are able to put language together. Then the three motions, I I I, well, the two motions at a time, and there will be a third now. Um, she wasn't willing to to move forward, and the other one I haven't talked about, just I want to make you aware of, is the. Monies, uh, Southwest Fire Mutual Aid. Uh, their infrastructure in their communities is uh, is at a critical state, uh, end of life. And it's about a four point eight million dollar in uh, in. Budget at need. And if they bonded with that, that means Swansea, whatever you're paying now, it would be a three hundred and fifty to four hundred and fifty percent increase in what you're paying. We've partnered with them because we updated our sheriff's dispatch down to four point four million, and we were able to find monies to grant to cover it. So so far, we've br- we've been able to find uh, through congressional spinner requests. And through Governor uh, Sununu's, uh, you're giving, uh, giving us uh, one point two million. Uh, towards uh, out of our monies that he needed to, needed to bring down. We're at two point, little, just under two point two million of that four point eight had been raised and met with some people yesterday. That we are, we're gonna continue to do what we can so that that the impact to the taxpayers and development, we can raise it, raise all those fundings through, through uh. To grants, hopefully, or at least a major portion of it.
One more question, I'm, uh, you have a kind of a mileage limit or how high you want to reach out to a, kind of full-time participant? Uh, what's your fifteen, maybe twenty miles uh, from Swansea, from your base? What do you need participant?
Uh, for, yeah, for a full-time participant, like we.
An employee?
No, just a, as a town.
Oh, oh, look. Well, I, I mean, I think uh, because we're in Cheshire County and and all of this happened because of the Cheshire County state representatives.
Yeah.
My bet is we would. Uh, if not limit of the service to Cheshire County, but certainly be able to. Uh if not limit of the service to Cheshire County, but certainly be able to uh separate. Uh as we do in other set. The allocation of any resource that we spend outside of the county so that it's clear that Cheshire County. Backstories aren't paying, but kind of subsidizing other towns' units and services. And so, and that's one of the things we're trying to do is to make sure we allocate the costs correctly so that everybody knows what they're paying for. We try to find the best balance of how to spread that out. Obviously, it's an inexact science because you never know how many calls you're gonna get. And you don't know where they're gonna be, and you don't know where they're gonna go. Um so, you know, we've had over a thousand. Uh Swansea residents that we've had to respond to the nine one one call, we've had almost a hundred Swansea residents, which we've taken to. More different facilities because they wind up in Cheshire. And Cheshire can't do what that patient needs, so so they have to be transferred to a facility that can provide that care. And then, so obviously, that's, that's, that's obviously pretty important and. Particularly with twenty-one cardiac arrests could be able to be on soon within seven and a half minutes, it's a very good too. So I, I think you're in a great spot and I think Swansea was very uh. Uh visionary to kind of help host us and and allow us to do what we did. Um I, I think it's been a great benefit. Hope, hopefully you can uh see this kind of grow and prosper.
Jack, you want to leave us the other two promotions there?
Oh, sure, uh uh we just stand up. This, this is the uh, this is Claudia Stewart, she's the commissioner-elect. She's gonna be taking over my district and I decided not to run. And then Terry Clark is the carryover uh commissioner. So there'll be a third one, I'll skip DeBarnado. And then those three will be carrying on. I'll, I'll begin my role as county treasurer. So I'll still get to sign all the paychecks.
I have a lot of questions.
I, I know that answers all the questions, but.
Thank you, guys. Very good job.
Thank you.
It wasn't mentioned, but I'll mention it. Uh here Swansea Fire Crew under. Keith Matson worked with us very well. And they're the first, uh the first advanced care that these patients pay. So these guys are definitely. A part of our program.
Fire Station Project Cost Estimator.
One side of the EMS world, the fire side, so. Uh last couple of days, the project from D W has come together, so you have to. So the main number you wanna look at in page one, look at is page twenty thirty. And it also included the reference, very much just kind of a little bit. So looking at a total, uh including all soft costs, insurance, design, various factors. Um about three point nine six the other week. Uh so, a little bit higher than I think we wanted, but they did a good job uh. Chirping their pencil, we'll be named by Katie and D W and Jay uh yesterday morning, we'll resume and. Talk about a few ideas that Jay and I had. Um which died down a little bit further, so I think between this and then the other funds that we've been able to squirrel away. Uh I think we'd be looking at bond amount just under three million. And for reference, this total kind of all-in number, which is like three point nine six this year. Was like five, just under five point three last year, so it's really significant decrease. Evidence of your hard words.
Just under three.
So some of those funds are saving annually the last several years, the fire station capital reserve fund. Uh their center machine office, uh two hundred thousand for aggressively directed spending. And then each year because proposing that will spend some pretty good fund balance or its general tactic, she's probably gonna have a lot of pain in that.
So that's why it's out of the two main developer, right?
And then the other piece to mention, one thing that um D W was a little nervous, that they have a design contingency in here. But usually the owner wanna carry a contingency, so I'm not factoring that in, but we still have. A little over four hundred thousand uncommitted in the um investment age per unit fund, so I think we could. Keep that back and then the capital, not all donations, the power initiatives that came up. That wouldn't be the one article though.
Speak to it. Um as Mark said, we were hoping for a little bit lower in the, the really, the only area that surprised me was the site work. It was only a hundred fifty thousand dollars in us in the last time. But we had an estimated site work and we thought we'd have a good job of producing the page and then. Working on just the flat portion of the site, so we didn't have that much work to be done. I think uh you're talking to them, they may have uh. Been a little more precise in how they estimated the site works this time and also uh that majority of things are the same, still have to build a. Base on the slide, but you know, foundation, slide to. Do utilities and stuff like that that are part of any like, like how big is, building is definitely smaller. So that, that's reflected in one of the others, and if you, if you do a. A line item by line item uh. Comparison, uh you can see that in many cases, this estimate versus last year's estimate is much is, is lower. And we made a big savings by going to wood framing instead of the uh. The uh structure of. Uh the building structure inside uh last year was six hundred sixty-five thousand and this year with framing is there and then through. So you would say a couple of thousand there. There's forty thousand saving quality, you know, a lot of it is, is because the building's smaller and there's a little less wrong there. The only other, the only thing that's not. Uh shown here is the, but it isn't material if they send us a gun. The option, if we decided to put off buying the, the elevator as part of this cost, we could save about a hundred thousand. Uh we wanted the elevator because that will involve storage, moving things up, up and downstairs, and we'll save cost later. Put it that way, right, if you ever want out in five seconds or consider in a serious way. So. Uh you know, it's still in here, but it's eighty-five thousand of the elevator and the cheaper the cost, the electrical systems, et cetera, et cetera. Bringing up total seven hundred thousand. So that's, that's the only wiggle room that we identified inside what they turned between Monday and today. They uh might, like, fuck, no, not what they can do to, like, this is Canada, Katie, which is very, very helpful. In open a piece of fire and say, we really need this, we really need that. And she shaved off a couple of thousands.
Shaved up here?
What you're seeing is about four hundred thousand dollars less than what they showed us on Monday.
Oh, you, you brought it down to.
And Katie, that's a lot of.
Can you go back to the site work that you said, do you, is that what stands out to me? Six hundred and forty, three thousand dollars for the site work over there with that property, is that? Is that, did you say that you were surprised at that too?
Well, we had thought, and I, I think the other members, I think you'll tell me, um. That they, that we thought that. This new design by occupying the flatter area of the site.
Correct.
Would eliminate some of, some of the proposed site work that was.
Correct.
Yeah, so we thought we'd save more than a hundred thirty thousand. And it was a hundred thousand until on Monday, about a hundred fifty thousand, but it went back and it really turned a little more off. So.
Were you saying the last one was seven hundred, seven thousand?
Last year, Jimmy, last year, Jimmy, this was seven hundred ninety-four thousand, three seventy-five.
Okay.
This year it's six forty-three, three forty-five, so it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars less.
Right.
Than last year. We were hoping for more.
Correct.
And I love to, you know, I, I mean. Uh Scott and Mike and, and Jeff, and we were all, we met with, we talked about. What we might do with the architectural plan, and we were all feeling that we've done enough to have a lot of savings there. So I, I look at the, the stuff they have down here, I have, I, I don't know enough about. The building trades to, to look at the breakdown of the site work here. Is reasonable, but everything that I listed here is stuff you gotta do, so.
Yeah. It just stood out to me, the first thing I looked at, I thought that was a lot, because I'm picturing a flat piece of property, you know, and there is more too, with ambulance center utilities and.
Yeah, I mean, I.
And all that.
I, I looked at demolition and I said, why, why do we have to demolish it?
Right.
Another guy get the asshole out of there and that, not an adult, that's all that is, not an adult, get the asshole.
And I thought we talked about the town, maybe our, our people doing some of this if it was possible, didn't we talk about that?
We did, and we mentioned that to them, and Michael was a little worried about how that might work with the.
Well, it's just if they're doing that, they're not doing other things and probably would have to rent equipment, so there's still is a cost, but absolutely that is an option.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, and there are ways that, you know, we do. We could try to figure out what the town could do for the site work especially. Um. But we have to look at the cost to the town to do that as well.
That's right.
What you might say for voters. I mean, it, it's like, you know, we have funds to pay the, the D W workers. To do this, they're not doing something else, they have to do that with overtime some other time, so I, I, I don't have the chance for that, this is. This gets to power management.
Something we can surely look into, we could get, like we showed you, we should have sitting here showing this number and showing what has to be done and. See his reaction to it. He could sit here and say, I could do that for three hundred thousand.
Perhaps he could, and the only worry I have, of course, is that it all has to be coordinated by the, the.
The people that are doing.
Construction manager, and so I, it's all, it, it's not a people, the, 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 the people are doing it, moving dirt here where they're expecting dirt to be.
That's right, that makes sense.
And so there's administrative costs to do that, and, and that's all I can say, I don't know enough about this. I don't know if anybody else wants to try it. You've all seen the breakdown.
I haven't seen it, no.
Are you planning on meeting the whole committee in order with us or us by you?
I don't know. Basically, we want to talk about, we, we, certainly, we should probably need to get this, talk about how to sell this. Uh and talk about, like, I mean, the plan was to start posting those videos, I actually made a video up about this. The cost, there's a lot of the final video. And I was thinking that, and again, I asked the committee for ideas and, and you know. Kathy's been really good on ideas, so these things. Uh looking at. Do we just make this video comparing this proposal to the last year's proposal and show how we lowered the cost? Or do we? Part of the other ways to present the money, do we, do we focus on how much we need to bond and, and. And, and so on, and not mention the, the whole. Uh cost of the town, um it seems a little dishonest to do that, but on the other hand, that's what the taxpayers have to pay for, so.
What was the complete comparison? I didn't see from last year, what was?
Last year was five million, two hundred eight thousand, this year three million nine.
It's really, we're gonna be asked for three, right?
Well, the total article is gonna have a three point nine.
And last year the bond was one million. So we're applying a lot of bond, it's over a million dollars less than what was proposed last. So obviously, it's money. But we knew it was gonna be money, and the question is, do I have money for the town, like, too much money? And there was no, there, there's some issues, we, we talked about issues of. By the time we get this going, we're gonna be constructing during the winter months, which means that it might take ten months to do it instead of eight months or something like this. Which might increase the cost. Uh the question was, do we wanna focus on setting the construction in the beginning of spring of twenty twenty-six? In which case, we can get it done quicker. Uh but then again, we don't know what the prices are in the spring of twenty twenty-six. Did I represent all that accurately, Mike?
Yeah, either you can wait, hopefully not have to start in the winter, but you might, prices might go up in the meantime, so it might. Might not have the result you hope, but.
Yeah, I have one question. On the, since it's all within one building and we're concerned about diesel. Uh do you know if there's proper ventilation provided by the?
Absolutely, absolutely. They, that's, that's what we understand from engineering in the apartment.
And what, what does it include?
Called a pl- climate event? Climate event?
Costs thirty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars, by the way.
That's similar to what the king has, they hook up pipes for.
It's exactly what he has, yes.
Okay, they hook up pipes to the exhaust and goes up to.
It captures it all and pushes it outside.
Okay.
And that's what we understand as for. Yes. It's kind of the industry standard.
Hey, well, if, if this were to be approved, what would be the delay to push construction up to the winter?
Um. The, the reason that they talk about a delay is that we need to set it out for bids, so we have to do the engineering now. And the. Preparation.
And importantly, construction level, that we don't spend money to get them.
Or the conceptual level, high, high conceptual. Yeah, so it could be expedited, we don't know if. We might start in September, but the project would still have to continue through the winter. So they allocated fifty thousand dollars for winter construction added costs of. The only way with elements, although we don't have much to learn anymore. Is one area where we might be able to say that we don't have to be, especially.
So what, what's the bid period? Well, what, what's the estimated time for her to finish? To get the construction?
We, we haven't, as far as I know, we haven't committed to her or D W being involved in the, talking about a bid processor. They want, they wanna be involved, obviously, but it depends on you folks, will you wanna put this out to the people first? D W's not the construction manager. We assumed Katie would continue to oversee this, but. I mean, it's not, we have a contract where they do that yet. So she hasn't responded, she hasn't told us what the cost.
Well, I think her cost, her cost was estimated. I think we're pretty well tied to her. You're right, we're not under contract for it, but, but so we have, on March thirteenth, the day after the vote, and vote passes, we're all excited and calling. She gets us the scope of work to, that costs us a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
That's ending.
We sign on that.
Yeah, that's it.
We have gotten that scheduled, yeah, I would expect a few months, two or three months, if you like, as based on just, even just doing this update took, what, one thirty? Uh I think it's three months, thirty days, here they decide contracts.
Mid-June.
Before, yeah. And then I'm ready to start on this July first.
That will land at the contractors, et cetera, et cetera, so if, if, if it's not approved, then they can't go out. You know, people might be busy already, so the contractors might be busy already. Uh we. We might find ourselves unable to nail people down to work that early as we want.
Very true.
That was, as you know, from your house, right? Next year we can touch them. So, you know, that's, that's where we are, and I, I think the committee wants to be involved in trying to. Promote this, and we have these three scheduled open houses at, at the fire station number two. The second through the fourth weekends in, in January, this, on that video that we promote, we'll. You can start doing that, start making posts on Facebook and playing links to these videos, and I will try to produce something that. Reflects these costs, I might have to hold it with the people in the committee to get that going, but um. That's, that's our plan right now, of course, we're gonna, it's holiday coming up, so. Uh while this is gonna, gonna have to. Hopefully, we'll start promoting this in early January. And if the, you know. Back and forth. We'll see what the town says. And we're gonna have, you know, great ideas we had about putting the plans up in town hall. And we're gonna have, you know, great ideas we had about putting the plans up in town hall next to the court's office. And, uh, the, uh, learn that we can post things on the, uh. Uh, these people's public interest, uh, site, and as well as on town Facebook. And, uh, as long as the community page, and we'll we'll get the word out. Much as we can, in terms of those videos that are our main process, but also, we would, um. Hope that members of the committee will respond to people that do comments, and pop it up among their friends, and and really vote for it. And and anyone else who feels they don't wanna do it, we sound like one of one of us, we might, might get a pass.
We we positive it both yesterday and I think earlier about whether it was a choice or not to go forward, I don't get a vote on that, but. I would think we should, because it's not like if it came back at six million, I can say, oh, yeah, I guess maybe not gonna pull it, but. I think for the fire department that needs it, for the community that needs it, for the people that work in the town hall. That eat those trucks out of there, I urge it to be the people forward with it, and give it our best sales. Sales and promotion, the the work the committee's done so far, I think the most important part is coming up, which is selling, and talking to the community.
I'll I'll share that, uh, when I saw this figure on Monday, the larger figure of what you see right now, I was, I was different. And after we had the meeting, uh, I was hopeful that maybe we knocked a couple hundred dollars off, but. When it came back, four, four hundred thousand plus off.
Could you briefly just explain how you did that? It's briefly, some of the bigger items that you did take away?
Well, just.
Did you take away big items?
No, one of them was the the owner's estimate, uh, a contingency owner's estimate, contingency plan, but it wasn't much. Much money, the other was, we just reminded them that they had put a whole bunch of stuff in there for, uh, some materials that have to be, have to be done. Uh, but they hadn't actually cost them out individually, so they put two hundred thousand dollars down, and they, we asked them to list. The amounts, the fees, the things that they cost, it came up to less than a hundred thousand, so there's a hundred thousand we saved right there. And Katie pushed them on that, and she pushed on a few other things, uh, they had, they had set up the firewall differently, uh, it was much longer, uh, extra. Lower and stuff that that had to be there to make a firewall between the fire area and the administrative area. And they had, they had made it much longer than it needed to be and and not in the right place, so it was in. Different place than the first floor, than the second floor, and we brought that, so they could go save some money there, and I think that was reflected. They were very eager to get that input and go back and see what they could do to limit the cost. So everybody, Katie, the D W were trying very hard to limit the cost that we were looking at, without being, and I asked them again this morning, I said, are you. Are you confident that this is gonna be enough, you know, that you're not overestimating what it is, and this is their third time.
And we got rid of the four number, and you made it to the three, so I think that was the big number.
No gimmick by us to get it under, we get it to three.
Get it to three, that's all.
Well, you know, we we had told Katie that we wanted to do this for.
Thirty five.
Five, the most four, and the construction, as you can see, the construction is only a little bit more than two hundred and five.
Yep. So it's a part that's throughout these, all these processes, always been frustrating, and you get that construction number, and it looks good, yeah, three million, that's what we want, and then, oh wait, oh wait, if you add in all the. The soft costs and the general conditions and the insurances and the contingencies before you know it.
Yeah, so last year there were five hundred and twenty thousand dollars of those soft costs, and this year, three hundred thousand, some of the soft costs from last year figured into the big picture too, so. But so, they they, they did a really good job of trying to estimate this better without a lot of extra stuff, and that's one reason we live it a little better. But again, if anything we can do with, you know. To to lower the site work costs, that that's the one area I think we might be.
Yeah, I think we could say, yeah, I think that number's pretty high, but. Oh, man.
Well, if you look at the, if you look at the breakdown, a lot of this stuff they have to do. And and that includes things like site improvements, where they're putting in, uh, maybe an asphalt, and, you know. No, not say, no, not they, they're looking at, uh, uh, landscape, so it's the plantings and the other things, that's all part of the site. Uh, we can not do plantings and figure the plantings will be funded some other way.
That's like getting after the planning board.
But those are like, those are like forty three thousand dollars for that, that's, that's nothing.
Seventy five feet.
All infinite species.
Yes.
The, and the cost, you know, we, you know, he's already estimated, you know, the water loss, they estimated, uh, running, uh, uh. Two hundred and ten linear feet of of water pipe, and, uh, I I don't know. I don't know if all that painting has to be done, uh, but. They're working off a plan, showing where the hydrid is right now at the edge of the area, and it seems to be even more. Stuff like that, but that's, that's, uh, you know, fifty six thousand dollars, almost, of of water, of water. The weather like. And I remember on the last year's plan, we only added fifteen thousand dollars to the cost of the, of the site. I don't, I didn't look at the details of how we connect up most of the different sites, and it's pretty much the same. But I I think we go as much as we can with this, and now we have to sell, that's.
Yeah. Put enough into it.
Yeah. Yeah. That's what we wanted, but if you guys were saying, whoa, then.
I think you came in right where we were hoping, I I didn't, I don't, I don't think that number's terrible. It's nice. No?
Hey. I'm just hopeful the bidding process will drop the ten percent of their amounts.
Yeah, and that's possible too.
Definitely.
And what happens then if if? We we save money out of the general fund that we can use for all the time using the fire station, or is that what happens if we? If the, if we don't have to spend, we have the bond, and obviously, we'll, we'll have to spend more than the bond, but if we don't have to spend some of the other funds, is that how that works?
No, you don't even have to spend all the bond, you can have it at the end, use bond, or whatever it is.
Whatever you don't have to pay is nothing for insurance, right?
Correct, yeah, so, that's, that's just the top, think of it like the top line, that's all we're at this. If we put out the bids and it comes in at three million, we could only borrow up to what we think we're gonna need.
I don't really care.
He do, so I think that's a hard sell.
Hard sell.
And you wish you had that number before.
Good. But I'm almost feeling, calling the, the guy who did the work on my house, who who goes to the wall of the fire station and say, hey. Save some of your skin. Yeah, I haven't got to go again.
Want to bring it up? Think it's a lot of work that you all did, of course, so.
He doesn't have a follow up, they already got a plan, how they're gonna, I was gonna bring that up, and. Boy could even ask, he already had his plan of the open house, which is, I think it's a great idea, the video. I think that's kind of the really important thing right now, is to get it out there and let people ask questions about it, you know, so they're not just going to vote and see.
We need a a special type meeting about it, I mean, a, you know, special session, we can, I think our meetings, we've had one. One, um, committee member should open our meetings the entire time. Uh, always publish it better, disclose.
That's gonna be the important thing, is getting it out there. The bond here.
That's the same thing, that's the bond here, and deliberative, or the the public meeting aspect, so I think it's, it's the others about.
Yeah, I mean, I, obviously, there's a little recession, that's, there are a lot of things in a little recession, we're, we're beaten to that. But what I'm saying, we should, we we have these open houses at the fire station, if these public signs are well, then we can talk to people there. But, um. Any ideas of what I should put in this video cost?
Twenty five percent less than whatever percentage was last time.
I would say it might not be the final, I mean, it's the final number, but it might not be after goes to bid, I mean, everyone understands the bidding process, so we could just add that in there, that. Even though it states that may been different, the bids.
Well, um, many members were here, um, a meeting, at Christmas, between Christmas and New Year's, something like that, you'll be allowed.
I don't know.
Anyway. Right? Do we pick off with that?
Great. Again, yeah, nice.
This is kind of more review if needed.
Going by, uh, Katie's line, that's.
Yeah, are you gonna prepare the money? Um, she's a little old, the mother, and.
In my office this afternoon, and, is this the, for Katie, this is the right one, all right, Mr. Bill on your way out, present for you on the printer, so.
So I just want to share that. The temporary more. Good job.
What's it happened? You can't make this very cold, it's three times, and you never open the goddamn thing. So you really never open that code.
My petitions, Jimmy.
Well, I think it's time to break it up and then see what's in that.
Well, that's, the petition, and I'm gonna put in to you people, come over this next meeting, I got a few more.
How many you got then?
Don't touch it, you touch it, you mix up it. Don't stand because we see it. Grace and Simon. Little Jimmy, no!
Wow. How many more you see inside the hotel?
Four more papers out, but I don't know.
So, when I got over.
Next meeting is on Monday.
A V's, for V's and R's?
V's and R's. You like the fun Cheryl, I thought, I don't know, she's been working there, I thought she did a real good job, and I think they started thinking about, yeah, I'm glad you brought her.
Next meeting is on Monday.
Monday?
We have holidays on next Wednesday.
Oh, oh, so it's gonna be sold Monday to five thirty?
Monday the thirtieth, not, not this coming Monday.
They all take off the holidays like I don't, I will, I would've been in business, but nobody wants to show up.
No such thing as a holiday for you, I tell you.
That's right, buddy.
It's a work of holiday.
Martin, very bad, ready? After the holiday party, you're helping host. Tell me this one.
Model your comment?
Well, the tip, three five.
Oh, the tip, yeah, three five.
There you go.
Uh, so the town hall entry, right, the door is open, so I didn't get him out, the floor is in, floor is in. All the trim style, all the trim style, but looking very nice.
Don't we, are we doing the do it past?
Don't try to, there's that outpost over here for such a system.
About a car.
Yeah, we're gonna get another, yeah.
These are installed there.
That's it, right?
So this is, they gave two options, this is the cheaper option, which is just a punch, punch code, also a more expensive option for flashing badges, but. It's it's more, it's not like the fire department where you just push it open, there is some tracking, so if there was some incident, you'd just see, okay, who's the last one to punch it? We can, we can look back.
This has.
Well, then you're still going into the alarm anyway.
Is it one number for everybody, does everybody have a different number?
Everyone has a different. Hundred users.
So if you, if I had my number, and I went and I told Joe Schmo. My number, and he went in there, I'd be, I'd find out, you you'd find out, he'd say, Jimmy, does someone come in there using your number? Yeah, but you'd come looking for me.
Well, they would know. All the cameras are on.
But how do we protect that, that's what I mean, that's, well, even the doors open that, right, in that way?
Well, the number of people that are probably copying those keys right now, this is so difficult here, it would be, it would be, if there was an incident, we would have to look back.
Okay.
Expect to be monitored again regularly.
And when you give this person your code, give him the code, the alarm, so. Look at all, tell him the alarm.
Oh, you're saying slick there, so you're saying your alarm's gonna go off when I give my guy the code, yeah?
Yeah.
And how many people know the alarm code?
People that go in there.
Huh?
Everybody has the wrong.
Oh, I don't have one.
Exactly, you just said, you don't give away your code.
Reason.
Very selective in those countries.
Still gonna have the key to the back door, right, so if the fails, it came off.
I think it'll be, I think you have something.
He would have.
I just said it's the wrong number. It's terrible, all Bruce Snyder, it's telling me what my number is, anytime they're knocking on the door. It sounds suspicious.
I didn't ask enough questions about this, wait a minute.
So can you?
Ask them more questions?
No, just briefly tell me, so you go to the door, we all have a code, hit the code, all the employees of St. Louis, Swansea, that work with one, have this code to go in there, right?
They have A code.
They have an A day of code, okay? And when somebody goes in there and something happens in there, we can go back and see who was allowed to go in. I'm in. Okay, that was, I'm gonna try to, because I think those are important things.
Every, every, each, uh, employee will have a number, but we, I mean, every employee shouldn't have access.
Oh, well, everyone has.
We'll put out something on Facebook, say, if you have a key, bring it in, say, give me a code.
Do a way to find out who's going in.
Make money on scrap and the keys.
So there was consensus, that, that.
And then, kind of associated, there was more on the fire station wall, part of the station two wall of the place, which also came on ice. Uh, D W director was wondering who won, so there's a fence at the higher part, and then there's kind of a lower. Not a huge drop, I feel like a lot of people aren't really, you really have to go looking to go back there, but we didn't wanna make the decision about whether to put up a fence or not. Uh, the the fence cost was about thirty two hundred dollars. So, I I, yeah, I know when we added on the dam, I think that made sense, I don't, this is the place where most people are walking around.
No water rolling, there's nothing to attract anybody to go.
Way more dangerous.
And we did away with the steps, but I was a little concerned with that, but we don't need them now, why would you?
You want five more.
Right, and those steps were cracking.
They were not, yeah, not great.
I expect it.
Good, good, good.
But, uh, I think they're fine when I saw them.
And you don't have to ask anyone to take a look at it.
I don't think we need to spend that money for that, I think it's a lot of money, but unnecessary.
But it's my bet. And you put a straight above any, that works, like, for the other.
I will say the real trail hole is filled, and I was right up last one, and it's all set, am I beautiful? We can have no accidents on that.
You did, did you, did you smooth the dirt?
I raked it myself.
Careful, blistered it.
Yeah, it's beautiful. The ones I know, it's gonna hold up a long time. No, it's pretty good.
Any public input? Being known.
Just put Scott out, I think it's an important mill discuss.
Yeah, you got two, not the books.
What are you discussing now, Scott?
You know, maybe the ninth of Jan. That'll be a publication.
So, so the planning board actually votes that, and we, we turn you guys, everybody that's on the planning board, that's how it works.
Votes to get behind it or not, the board votes to recommend port fences or not, and then they vote the general public vote, I mean, then. And but that's the only time it's discussed, it's not discussed in the delivery of decisions, that's discussed right here in public here, so. That's it, the discussion part of it. That's it, discussion part of it. Then it doesn't change after that, it's on the ballot, and you go here and.
I've been to a couple of Richmond's, oh, Richmond does a, a candidate's night. And they they discuss everything that's on the warrant. So, uh, last year. Swansea Preservation Society did the select board. Candidate meeting upstairs, but in there, in this case, they have everybody. There's no debate, it's just each candidate gets up and says who they are and whatever. But then they go over the warrant art and they had one very similar to that, having to do with. A setback from wetlands. It was a contentious discussion. It was weird, contentious with with regard to uh taking of property rights and and all that, I don't know how to vote in. On a warrant, but that was a, I thought that was something that Swansea ought to do, because you're right. How many people attend a public hearing about a zoning ordinance? Change, right, and and it goes right to the ballot. And most people either vote yes, because they think the planning board wouldn't have it there if it wasn't a.
Well, they see the planning board recommends it, so they say, that's it for me, I don't have to read it.
That's same for the school board or whatever. Uh, until they, until they realize what happened. And it's.
And they talk to the planning staff and they say, what?
Oh, and you don't need more.
Then they come to one.
And then they get to the zone board.
Yeah, that's. Yes.
Can I just, can you clarify it a little for me, so the new thing you, that if there's a string running down a piece of property. Right, that's considered wet, right?
Or a pond.
Or a pond. So completely on each side of this stream would be seventy five feet, you couldn't even bowl, and seventy five feet you couldn't even bowl, there'd be a hundred fifty feet. Property that you couldn't do nothing, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And right now, where does it stand?
It stands right up to the wetland.
Right up to the wet.
Well, it stands right now, in Swansea, in zoning ordinance, the streams or ponds are not considered part of the land. We go by the state definition of the wetland work order, that's it, but. Of the amendments coming into the zoning now would be adding streams, vernal pools, ones that thrive in the summertime. Uh, ponds, uh, water, bodies of water, that would be also be considered wetland, and that would also be water.
Ah.
So that's, that's another amendment that's gonna be added in there with that.
With that.
Yeah, with that, it's adding to. That area there.
Because right now, streams and ponds ain't considered wetlands.
No, no, it will, the, yeah, they are not.
Wetlands are.
They're on.
They're on the state level.
Yeah, they're on the ten.
Basically, the definition of the wetlands, so somebody told me that if you want to know what's wetlands, you would see. Cat night tees and and grass is a way to distinguish what a wetland is.
It's, it's, it's by soil sign, it's, it's by the soil, you know, they take a little hole there, I'll see where the soils are. And uh, if it matches that criteria, and if it matches some of the vegetation criteria and standing water criteria. Uh, then they're designated as a wetland.
That's rather. I understand.
Yeah, but if if there's a contention about it, then that's how it's decided. Wetlands, sign is.
So Scott, the pond that Bruce Ferney put in. Where he has lived on Flatwood, that fire pond that he put in back when they did Little Land Heights.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If this were to pass. The the area that Mike Johnson has, he'd have to stay fifty feet. From, from that pond.
Oh, both fire ponds are excluded, I'm pretty sure, in in part of it, fire ponds are maintenance of them anyways, I'm not sure about them. I think the buffer may still have to be there, but. They are excluded for, you know, maintaining and that type of things, so if it's fire pond, it could still be maintained and probably mowed right up to it, you know, it's a fire pond.
Cause you're maintaining.
Yeah, so you have that, it's kinda had that, but another pond, something like uh. Any of the small ponds or that you see around any of the fields. That would be contained in that seventy five feet, almost around.
So the area that he mows. Uh, off of the Carlton Bridge, Carlton Road Bridge on both sides. Which would be along the.
He would add seventy five feet to the river park.
Right, so so that would all just be like this.
Supposed to be, yeah, by that, now of course. Then there's the grandfather's plot, you know, okay. Every, every building that's closer than seventy five feet to these wetlands stream or whatever it is would be grandfathered in. It's, it's only a new construction like that. Yet, that sets it up for uh. You wanna expand your building, you wanna put a fort down, you wanna do whatever you wanna do, you're going for a variance, because you're not allowed to do it if it's in that zone. That's another headache, it's gonna set up a Z V A. And there's no, you know, filling or any dredging or any type of that stuff, which is in the wetland, but this would be in the seventy five foot area as well, so. If you had a driveway, you could maintain that driveway, but if you own a piece of property that's. Your driveway going into that property was within that seventy foot, five foot area, you'd have to go to the Z V A. To get a variance for that driveway into a piece of property back there. From what I can see.
So amazing.
And I think, well, this. They also, and I think, you know, this, this is the, they wanna designate what the prime wetlands are, and that would be a hundred what. Buffer around what's called prime wetlands, but to designate a prime wetland, they have to identify them, and they have to come in the planning board for a public hearing. As to, you know, give the public the the outcome as to what those prime wetlands are, what they're considering. And it has to be voted on at town meeting, I'm pretty sure, as to what those prime wetlands are, if it was a prime, then it'd be a hundred. But that's not in this zone, that's further down the road. You know, control and protection.
Be current use also, because they can't do anything there either?
I don't know about current use, shoreline protection, the current use is mainly for, well, the wetlands. The shoreline protection isn't considered a wetlands, they're in control of it.
Right, well, you're adding what was to the current use, I'm wondering, shoreline protection.
Well, that's a hundred and twenty five feet, no. Well, my question was about current use, we aren't adding anything to current use, but my question was, can a property. Yeah, can they add the dry land to that current use there if they're paying taxes on it, can't do anything with it?
So why couldn't they do that shoreline protection? Because it's the same. Dry land.
It is, but they don't, they don't own the river.
I mean, Mark's here for that.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, they they haven't put the river, it's run by their property, they haven't put the river into shoreline, I mean, into a current use.
Right.
But they may have put some of their wetlands into current use. So, yeah, I don't know about that, that's another confusing question.
It it does create tremendous wrinkles from an assessing perspective, if you're anticipating that. If this, from from the standpoint that somebody comes and requests a variance to put a, put a deck on. Now, now that impacts the assessing as as well as the the question of. Of being able to utilize that land.
So the current use manual defines wetlands as those areas of farm, forest, or unproductive land that are inundated or saturated by surface water or groundwater. At a frequency and duration sufficient to support and that under normal circumstances do support a prevalence of vegetation typically adapted for light. Saturated soil condition, so I don't think the buffer would, does create that condition. Right, so that's, that's the R S A, that's the exact word, the word R S A. In the current condition. And that comes from the R S A, you can look it up in the statute, that's a word to work. So you, yeah, so that would not fall into that category, so you probably could not put that dry land into that, add it to that current use. So you wouldn't be able to. It contains, but full rate, not that current use, right, not that buffer. That's what I figured, then, like I say, it came up at the meeting. And actually, your representative's reason for voting for to continue to public hearing was because of that, that it looked like it could go in current use. If that passes, how is that gonna affect the new fire station? Isn't there a wetland right there? Uh, is there? But in there, there's. Isn't that prime, there are the fire port site?
Prime one.
Guys, like you shoot yourself in the foot, I don't know. But the town of Swansea and any town is, is uh, they do not have to abide by their own zoning limits. At all, that's part of the state section, we don't have to abide by it. Would have looked like it, but.
Was it I T L, I think, is that what you call it?
It exceeds the legislature.
Yeah, it needs further, further study or further interest study. Put it on the table.
Uh, just informational for planning board, just giving you a heads up on the select board as well, uh. D W director, Russo and I, we chatted today to talk about the next phase of drainage improvements at Precious Park. Uh, so it's the first phase is the bathhouse and the um. Kind of water retention, not water retention, rain garden, right? Um, kind of on the lockdown on the left side, so this is mostly looking at the right side, which has paved swell right now. Uh, improving that, getting rid of the paved swell, and again, not quite a rain garden, but um. It's still. Here, there's a silt in and then pipe into the lake, and then improve that kind of luge that goes down now from the driveway. Down to the uh beach, so just giving you a heads up that we talked about, segmenting the planning board for. Sounds familiar, I remember when they came in, I think they mentioned that phase two was gonna entail something like that. So, yeah, it sounds like some more good improvements over there.
A little parking lot being opened.
It's, I don't think the parking lot itself, but where the parking lot goes down. That big area that right now is just kinda straight down to make it more accessible, hopefully avoiding some of the water issues that it causes right now.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Very good. You too.
Harry Christens.
Scott, you got a couple or two?
All right then. We're not here to explain. Very. Scott, you want to get down to the problem? Not say, yeah. Yeah.